... And you should remember that of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and the living and the dead.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together on this occasion. As we come to God, we ask that you come and miss. We also, Heavenly Father, do lead God and direct our minds. We ask for, Heavenly Father, that everything that be said and done be done in pleasing and thy sight, but it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. The purpose of our gathering tonight is that we can fill the meeting number five. That is the purpose of our gathering tonight. And if there is no objection, I would that with your approval that Mr. Davis would share the furtherance of this particular meeting. There are no objections.
Well, good evening. How's everybody doing? It's so good to see you today. My name is Don Davis. I serve as the first vice from District Democratic Party Chair. And I'm here and glad to stand in with your chair today and to take us through this process. And I would also like to pause, if we could, for a moment. Obviously, we're here as a result of the death of vacancy of the president by the Honorable Mr. Don Felton. So I would like to, would be remiss if we just take a moment now, take a moment tonight, just to reflect upon. Thank you. Let me share a few other housekeeping items as we prepare then to move to the agenda. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware and be on record, we do have media at this present, and we have our local press. We also have, yes, reporting. We'll just ask if all the media, any media outlets will stand up and just make yourself known. And you, everybody probably knows everybody, but if you can just state your names and your affiliation. I want to start here. Just a little.
My name is Cal Magnus. I'm with the Bean Hall. It's still being held.
John Walker, Rock and Roll Telegraph, welcome to Tarpon Magazine.
Camilla Stansfield, D.C.N., plus Executive Committee, but not in this district.
Thank you so much, and we do appreciate the media for your presence and your interest in tonight's meeting. I would like to spend some time, and first thing, all members should have had the agenda. And I'd like to start and ask if you could please pull out the agenda. But I would also like to emphasize, as we move forward, from this point on, the meeting is actually a meeting of the Executive Committee of District Five. So it's only those residents who reside in this district who are part of the county's Executive Committee who are actually able to participate tonight. Being that we will likely move towards opening the floor at some point for nominations, at that point, others who are here will be able to participate at the pleasure of the Executive Committee. But I want to emphasize at this time, this is indeed the meeting of the Executive Committee. Okay? So with that being said, if you can, if we can pick up on the agenda, and based on inspection of information that has been provided to me, there was indeed a sufficient notice that was provided to the Executive Committee members who are obviously present tonight. And you see on the agenda, then, Items One, the call, the order, pledge, prayer, two and three, then we'll go into the purpose here. And we move eventually into Item Five, which is an overview of the committee members, committee voting procedures. Item Six, questions and answer, period. Talk about what's going to happen. I tend not to rush these. I want to make sure everybody is on board, have any questions answered, you know what's going to take place. I'd like to share the rules in advance, open now as it's taking place. We all know what the rules are. Number seven, we'll move into nominations. We'll close the floor for nominations. We do have here that there are letters of interest that's been provided, and I'll speak about that momentarily. We will go on then, Item Eight, as nominations are made by the committee, we'll consider, because we have here three to seven minutes and so forth, these are actually technically some rules, but we haven't established rules yet, and we'll talk about that shortly. Consider setting some rules for tonight. But we will recognize the nominees ideally for speeches. We will go on then, Item Nine, to tally in terms of opening the election, the polls for the election. We'll close the polls for the election, we'll tally the results. And that brings us into, okay, I'm sorry, number nine is just the tabulation of committee. And then we'll go into the committee voting, which is ten. I apologize about that. Then number eleven, we'll actually announce the tally and announcement of the votes. We'll congratulate the candidate. We'll ask the person to come forward if they would have any remarks, and then we'll have any closing. And what this is all leading towards is not only that name, where you come up with a name to fill the vacancy, but what's going to happen as a result of tonight is when we come up with that name, then the chair will officially, in accordance with the general statutes, transmit on behalf of the party on the Executive Committee to the Board of Commissions on the work that's been completed tonight as the official inauguration of the party. So that's not included here, but that's what happens after the meeting tonight, and that's what we're working towards. So let's talk, if we could, one thing I would like to add in terms of the flow of the agenda, is right between the overview and the question and answers, I would like for us to, if we could pencil in technically to approve the agenda, and also to approve the rules, special rules for today. And we'll start actually in order, I apologize, special rules and then approve the agenda. And from there, we'll then go into the question and answer. Okay? So again, I'm clarifying, we've gone through Items One through Three, which are the protocols. We've had just a general overview of the purpose. Before we get into the overview, what I would like to do is, or after the overview, is include special rules, and that can be Five A, special rules, Five A, and then Five B, approve the agenda itself. We just want to make sure the committee accepts the official agenda. And then we'll pick up as printed Six through Fifteen. Any questions on that request? All right. If there's no questions on the request, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to receive, to approve the agenda, the proposed agenda, for this meeting, which is obviously March the nineteenth, six o'clock P.M. here at the school, for the purpose of filling the vacancy of District Five, with the two amendments of including Five A, special rules, and special rules, and Five B, to consider actually approving the, okay? Actually, I apologize about this, because really what we're doing now is actually approving the agenda so we can really strike approval of the agenda as Five B, because we haven't actually gone over the overview. But what I'm trying to get to right now is approval of the agenda and then actually the overview. So what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda with this amendment included in the agenda. I apologize if there's confusion. Let me start again, and I'm slowing this down. I'm confusing myself a little bit. What we're doing now is I'm going to ask for you to under, to create a Five A, which would be the special rules. And technically, since we're at, after the purpose right now, I'm going to ask you to allow me to include the adoption of this agenda tonight. Does everybody understand what I'm saying? Okay. And I apologize about this. So it's been moved, is there a second? To adopt the agenda with the amendments ordered. Okay? Any questions? If there's no questions, all in favor of the motion to approve the proposed agenda with the amendments ordered, please let it be known by saying "aye." All opposed, no. The ayes have the motion here, but it's carried. So the first item on the agenda then is to overview what's going to take place tonight. We'll move forward momentarily with a process of filling the vacancies. What we're going to do is we're going to open it up again for the Executive Committee. You will have the ability to nominate anyone who is a resident and that's a Democrat within District Five. Now, under the Robert Rules of Order, which is the parliamentary authority for party, technically a member can only nominate up to the number of vacancies. In this case, there's one vacancy, so any committee member can nominate up to one person. Again, the parameters of that, they have to be a resident of the district and a Democrat. Moving on, we'll open up the process. We're not going to rush the process. We'll take it on, maybe we'll do that process. You know, a question came up, and it's all on the agenda, about the letter that was asked and sent out, if you were interested to submit the letter. Do realize that that's more administrative, it's not a requirement. So regardless if a person submitted the letter or not, it does not make them eligible or ineligible for this process. Okay? What we will do is, I'm just curious, do we have letters that's been submitted? So there are technically no letters submitted anywhere. I was going to call and ask for whatever letters, letters that's been submitted, so everybody would know. So technically, no letters have been submitted, but that does not yet obviously bind us, prohibit us from moving forward. What happened, I'll open it up, the floor for nominations. You begin to make the nominations, there's no need to rush. So move the close the floor for nominations on said name. I mean, technically in rules, the chair doesn't have to accept that motion and actually has an obligation and responsibility to make sure there's been sufficient time provided to receive nominations. After there's been the opinion of sufficient time provided to receive the nominations, then we will accept any motion to close the floor. Once we then close the floor for nominations, what I'm going to ask you to do is to consider some special rules, if I may. These are special rules that I have actually framed, and we typically will use for procedures like this. Rule number one, and what we're trying to do is establish parameters then on how do we move forward in this process. So rule number one that I would ask you to consider, and again, I would simply say these rules have been fairly time-tested. I've been actually serving as District Chair for, what are we, actually over fifteen years? And I've used these rules for the most part in most of these type proceedings. Rule number one, when we move forward nominating individuals, is to put a time limit on those nominating speeches. We've been in situations where some will just continue to go on, and even with a nominating speech, you want to make sure that you provide balance, a time limit does so. So I'm asking that we'll consider establishing rule number one, nominating speeches will not exceed two minutes. So that means when you go to nominate, you can talk about that person, your character, whatever, but you have up to two minutes, and once the two minutes is over, then we'll recognize anyone else for any other nominations. So that's rule number one. Rule number two, interestingly often what comes up is making seconds to a nomination. Technically, under Robert's Rules of Order, a seconded nomination is not a requirement in the nomination process. However, sometimes it happens, it's customary for someone to kind of put a vote of confidence on the nominee. So what I'm asking, rule number two, second speech is not to exceed one minute. Okay? Rule number three, is when we get into nominations in terms of candidates, the nominees coming up to speak before you, we do want to put a time and place. I see here it has three to seven minutes. Typically, I think at this point, we could probably get it done in about three minutes. If you want to expand that number to, up to seven, you want to reduce it?
Yeah, I don't need two minutes.
Two minutes? This is your meeting, so I'm hearing two minutes. So, okay, so two minutes is what I'm hearing, but of course, this is not, this does not take effect until you go on, okay? Rule number four, committee members make caucus par to each vote, because what will happen is, after you're done, and if you don't want to talk, you don't have to talk, but you can talk amongst each other, okay? You just see how others are voting, to encourage others to vote, however. But what I'm asking, rule number four, is for the caucusing. Committee members make caucus par to each vote for a period not to exceed ten minutes, unless approved by two-thirds as super majority. And the reason for this, you don't want a filibuster, so to speak, to take place, you just, let's have the conversations. If you wish, and there's no obligation to caucus, sometimes we'll say, well, let's just see how it goes in the first round. There's no obligation, but the point that I'm making, we do need to put a time limit so that we don't continue to go on with the process. And that's rule number four. Rule number five is, we'll have roll call, the voting by roll call. So essentially, we'll go through, we'll call everyone's name, you'll state your vote, okay? I would let everybody know, I know this came up before, and we're looking at, we went to the sheriffs, filling that vacancy. It's actually by D and C bylaws that the votes are open, it's public. That sometimes it comes up, you know, can the votes be secret, a secret ballot? No one's going to answer that, so we have an open process. You have to stand by your vote. So that's rule five, roll call, vote to be administered. Rule number six, and again, this is getting into some technicality, the nominee, if we get multiple nominations, and the nominee with the lowest votes, well, let me say this, according to the plan of organization, you have to win by a majority plus one. So let's say you had five people, but you don't get to the fifty percent plus one, now the question is what do you do, and that's where rule six comes in. It says the nominee with the lowest votes shall be removed first. If the whole slate doesn't get to fifty percent plus one, you remove the person with the lowest votes, and then you hold another round of ballots. And you keep on with that process until you get to the fifty percent plus one. In other words, this is not based on plurality, but it truly is based on a simple majority plus one. Okay? So that's rule number six, and that's just to keep us in compliance with the Democratic Party's plan of organization. And then the final rule for tonight is, in the event, what happens if two people are tied, for instance, as the lowest vote here? We're going to break the tie, and this is our rule seven. A runoff shall be held, and if there is a tie for the lowest votes in the event, no nominee receives a simple majority plus one. So those are the proposed rules. At this time, I would ask, and with the, and I'm willing to adjust the proposal from, to adjust the three minutes to two minutes, and I'll ask, is there a motion to receive these rules? Any questions on the rules first? Is there a motion to receive?
I don't have a motion, I can't do it.
Okay, and these are the special rules. Okay? Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on the rules? Okay, I haven't heard none. All in favor of adopting these seven rules, let it be known by saying "aye." All opposed, no. The ayes have the motion, and if I, it's carried. All right. So as we now proceed to move forward, let me ask in general, do you have any questions Any questions about what's about to happen? And there's one thing I need to do before we move further. Just do a roll call. Mr. Peddaway? Is Mr. Peddaway present? If he can say "present."
Yes, present.
Okay. Mrs. Peddaway?
Present.
I have a question. I'm showing the same address, the Canida, P.O. Box 1121, Canida.
Yes.
Okay. And my question is, I see Mr. Peddaway is the chair of the person, and I'm showing Mrs. Peddaway as the vice chair. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. What I'm going to rule is that, in accordance with the plan of organization, two family members cannot actually vote the officers of the precinct.
It's the same house, and that's the same.
It's the rule I did create, but what I would need to ask is for, it would be my opinion, it would be my opinion, if you had the precinct meeting, and Mr. Peddaway, you elected as chair, typically when you're holding the meetings, you're elected a chair, and because that occurred first, it would be in my opinion that even though the young man had proceeded, that actually would have been invalid for Ms. Peddaway to actually be able to serve as vice chair. So I'm recognizing Mr. Peddaway as the chair, and I'm recognizing that there's a vacancy as the vice chair. Okay? So I'm going to ask Ms. Peddaway, if you're more than welcome to join our guest at the meeting tonight. Mrs. Peddaway. And only because I'm going on the order of the office. Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we understand, but our way of being is confident, I'll heal where you are.
I'll put it this way, let me say this, let me say this, if it's without objection from the Executive Committee, you are able to stay, if you need assistance, however, you will not be able to vote.
Yes, that's good.
Is that without objection?
That works.
Okay.
That's good.
Let's do it now.
You need a motion over there?
No, we did it by consensus. Okay? Next we have is Mayor Ingraham, Milton Goff, Commissioner, Johnny Rispus, Elton Skinner. Next we have, on its order, Chair, Congresswoman, President, Jesse Eason. Do you have a proxy? Was that submitted? Super, perfect, perfect, perfect. The reason I'm saying perfect on that, and I'd say walking everybody through the rules, I try to use this as a learning opportunity as well, but according to the rules, the proxy has to be submitted to the chair or the secretary before the meeting is called for. So, perfect, great demand. Martha Johnson, I saw. And then we have Blackspill, Mrs. Ellen Collins-Hodgson.
Here.
Okay. Chair, vice chair, Mamie Cobb.
Here.
All right. Then we have Charles Lewis.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Okay, next we have Huntops, George Barnes, who's here. Annie Mammy.
I have a question.
Proxy, did you turn in?
Yes.
And I'm sure we should.
Call.
Steve Burse.
Here.
Proxy. Okay. Did that turn in?
Yes.
Okay. And who's the proxy?
Leader O'Leary Johnson.
And I do want to verify the proxies are in the same precincts, that's correct. Okay, forget them. All right. Then we have Brenda Barnes. Florence Bender. Barbara Taylor.
Yes.
I can have the proxy.
You have it.
He's already.
Okay. So you're Barbara's proxy. And that is, shall I say that?
Tagging.
I'm sorry?
Tagging.
Okay, okay. Okay, and then Oscar Mayberry. I'm showing twenty, I'm showing twenty-one, that I will go through in a second. Okay. So starting with Canida, showing two votes, because technically there's a vacancy, so Jesse Peddaway, two votes.
I can ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, can I say if there was only one here, um, number two, that they can't vote, they don't own?
Under the rules, if we fill, I mean, Under the rules, if we fill, I mean, if you have the, the, if you have both members, and let's say one is not present, then that one person can vote in full capacity.
Yes.
But in this case, there's actually a vacancy now. So, because of the vacancy, there's not eligibility other than to vote in capacity with the chair. Okay? Perfect. So, so there's two votes for Mr. Peddaway, we're showing, that's for Canida, Coach Barner, five votes total, Mr. Cobb, two votes, Glenn Shelton, proxy for Jesse Eason, two votes, Martha Johnson, one vote. We have McIsfield, four votes total, Ms. Ella Collins-Hopkins, one vote, Mamie Cobb, one vote, Charles Lewis, one vote, William Ellis, one vote, for a total of four votes. Okay? And then Pine Tops, we have a total of ten votes. Four votes for George Barnes, Mr. Cobb, who is proxy for Annie Manning, four votes, Leroy Johnson, who is proxy for Steve Burse, one vote. And then I have Mrs. Claire Cobb, proxy for Barbara Taylor, one vote, for a total of ten votes. So again, I have two votes for Canida, and five for Coach Barner, four for McIsfield, and then ten for Pine Tops. And twenty-one votes total. That means then, are we good?
Yeah, but I don't, that's twenty-one, but I don't quite understand that, I thought it was always that, um, when there was one person here, say if I were not here, he could vote his own way.
That's correct. But, and let me ask, that is correct.
Why can't he vote his own way?
You told, in this case, there's a vacancy. That's true. We're gonna stand at ease for a second.
Well, I tell you one thing, we need to be there about precincts. I understand what you're saying.
But at the same time, what she's asking is that there's a vacancy. In the Northland Democratic Party Plan of Organization, and in no circumstances shall either the chair or vice chair be able to cast more than one half of the vote to which the precinct is entitled, even though the other is optioned. So, what I was saying, and I do stand corrected, that applies at the legislative level, it's not consistent with the county. That rule applies for the legislative, regardless, it brings us back to the same place, that under no circumstances would you be able to vote both. So, we're gonna have to acknowledge that again, there's a vacancy that exists here. Yes, ma'am.
May I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that that, no two people in the same house can vote, that's what it is?
That's actually what I'm referencing now, looking at provision, 'cause I wanna be clear, I don't want anybody to think I...
That all the way to make the vice chair, right?
That's correct, and that's what I was, I'm in the process of referencing, right?
I agree.
Section one point zero three of the Plan of Organization, and it reads this on precinct officers, no officers of the precinct committee shall be from the same immediate family residing in the same household. So that's why I asked that question. Are we good now? All right. And like I said, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make it, it's not uncommon, I have seen this in other counties, but we do need to have to, and definitely a process like this here.
So they're gonna have to go back through people who are already in houses to separate any households that are already voting in this up today to now. There's some more people with cousins and wives in the same house.
That, that may be the case.
Yeah.
But again, for the purpose of this meeting today, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're dealing with this matter, that's for sure. And again, I don't know that you have to go back and undo anything, because if you met, and this is, this is the ruling I tend to take, if you met at the precinct, elected a chair, elected a vice chair, and then elected a secretary or treasurer, typically doing that order because you have to, if you don't achieve a certain demographic as chair, then you try to realize as vice chair according to the plan. So that's why you do it in that sequence. So what I'm saying is, if you elect the chair before now you go into this other requirements, then by virtue of this provision, you could not have served as vice chair ever anyway. So even though the precinct took that action, it was inconsistent with the bylaws, therefore, there was never, you never filled the positions, what I'm saying, in time. And so what that means in summary, if this is happening other places in the county, there are just vacancies, and after this, y'all need to go back and fill those vacancies. And, okay. All right, so we're good on that? All right, so we have twenty-one voting members who are present, and the plan says fifty percent, fifty percent plus one. So that then leaves us at ten point five, plus one is eleven point five. For someone to win and be recommended, they have to have eleven point five votes. Eleven point five votes. Okay? And that's assuming they were provided remains. Any questions on that? You have, some cases, a vote, other cases, four votes. There's no stipulation in the plan that you can't provide votes. Those are just your votes that you can control. At the end of the day, whoever is recommended must have at least eleven point five. Okay? All right. Another thing I want to put out, I just wanna put this out, you can nominate, and anybody that's in the district, Democrat, if a committee member, executive committee member nominated themselves, I'm not encouraging that, I'm just saying, there's nothing wrong with that, there's nothing that stops a person from voting. Okay? All right, any questions whatsoever? I think hopefully, that's why I try to slow it down, because now, once we get moving, it's, we're gonna move. Any questions on any whatsoever? Are we all on the same page?
I think so.
So we know what's about to happen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I heard, let's go, let's do it. And thanks for bearing with me, y'all, and I apologize, I mean, on a couple of points, but that's why I don't want to take the time to pull the plan out, so there's no question of what we're doing tonight. And when we walk out of here, it's also how it happens, that we all walk out at least feeling that we had a fair process.
Right.
Okay? All right. No questions? Final questions? There are no final questions? And it's time, we'll open the floor for nominees, fill the vacancy of District Five, Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners.
My nominee, R. Ralph Dawson-Webb.
Yes. R. Ralph?
Ralph Dawson-Webb. Ralph Dawson.
Dawson.
Webb.
Webb. I was about to say R. Ralph Dawson-Webb. Okay. I thought I heard a R in there. Okay. All right. Are there other nominees? Are there other nominees? Anyone else wanna make the nomination? I'm gonna ask again, are there other nominations? If there are no other nominations, it may have taken me longer to explain them. Did. They ended up picking up the chair and having sufficient time to make nominations. If there are no other nominations, then I'm gonna ask if you could please entertain a motion to close the floor on the said name of Ralph Dawson-Webb, and to receive Ralph Dawson-Webb by acclamation for the office, or to, for the recommendation of the office of District Five of Edgecombe County. It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. The motion before us is to close the floor for nominations, and to receive Ralph by acclamation for District Five of Edgecombe County. All in favor, let me know, I said, "Ah!" Most polls, "No!" The picking up the chair, the eyes have, congratulations to Ralph! Come on up! It took me long to get to the... Y'all had your homework. Congratulations to ya! Is, is your, uh... So, thank you so very much. Neither Mr. Felton or I wish to call you such a delayed time tonight. You should know that Mr. John Felton was a very, very dear friend of mine, because he was a very, very dear friend of yours. I also want you to know that the process of considering serving my county and this district did not start upon the passing of Mr. John. Mr. Vines Cobb, who was a great friend, and I had this conversation the last year that he and I sat on hole number eleven in Macro Pine Country Club, hosting the Edgecombe Community College Golf Tournament, our conversation turned to this. And Mr. Vines gave me some great advice, he said, "Ralph, when the time is right for you, you will know it, and I highly encourage you to be a servant to your fellow citizens in this county." I, I know most of you, some wonderful, wonderful people come off of Lewis Road in rural District Five. Mr. Charlie Cobb and I grew up on the same road, and as Charlie knows, I reside on the same road. Our family's roots go deep in Edgecombe County. One maternal grandfather came just across the line in Pitt County. Before I get into all that, I just wanna say, I was born in Wilson County, so I guess something told me I need to go back to Wilson County, over towards Stansburg, and choose this lovely lady Teresa, that's my wife. I think it is very important for you to know that she has supported me in every endeavor that I have undertaken. We've been married forty years, October fourteenth, nineteen seventy-eight, and even though it seems like in some stance it was yesterday, it's getting on up there. And what a wonderful time we've had, we have two children, Jason and his wife Ursula, with three grandkids who reside at Clayton, Diana and her husband Brad, who reside right outside of Pine, between Pine Tops and McIsfield, over toward the Macro Pine. Diana is a product of Edgecombe County School, is also, Mr. Dino Ellis can tell you all about her, because he was not only her principal as she came to the school, Diana is a second grade teacher here, working on, I believe, her eleventh year. Which that one is kinda strange, I just, that's something to it. But I drove a school bus, I graduated from South Edgecombe. I had the pleasure of starting the first class that started at South Edgecombe and graduated at South Edgecombe in nineteen seventy-three. What a wonderful time I had in high school. Mr. Charles Lewis, right there, he and I played a little basketball together. If I couldn't jump like he could, I probably been in the NBA coming back. It's always good to dream, Mr. Charles. Always good to dream. Miss Mamie Cobb and I have worked a little bit on Lewis Road too. She worked, I played. And all this to say, you know, I can tell you a little bit about my education from, and I will, from graduating seventy-three to South Edgecombe. I went to Illinois Community College, I went to Durham Technical Community College, I finished a postgraduate internship program of respiratory therapy at University. Later, I graduated from the Mount Olive University. And all that to say that I came back to home, came back home to Edgecombe County. After my education at Duke, and there at the hospital, and worked at Wilson Medical Center, at Wilson Memorial for seven to eight years, went over to Heritage Hospital, which is now by the Edgecombe, after about three years, Dr. Hartwell Fuller and Kathy Lundey came to my office, closed the door, said, "Ralph, we need to start a respiratory therapy program at Edgecombe Community College." And I had already been thinking about that, and the rest is history. I went to Edgecombe Community College in nineteen eighty-eight, started respiratory therapy program there, and just retired as program director September the first of this past year. In saying that, my thirty-plus years at the college, I'll just put it this way. If I had been a rich man, and I'm far, far from that, I've said this before, I would have paid Edgecombe Community College to let me go there every day and serve my students in this community. I love my job, I love my job with passion, and I love my students with passion. I think, together with my coworkers in the administration at college, and the wonderful trustees, we have put out, during my tenure there, around three hundred and twenty-some respiratory therapists that not only serve our area, but we've had students to go to Johns Hopkins, we've had students at Duke University, Memorial Hospital in Chapel Hill, all over. And what, what a wonderful opportunity I have had as an educator to watch people come in and leave there, and look at them like a flower blooming upon graduation, going out, becoming gainfully employed, and becoming a wonderful citizen and provider for their children. And so, all I wanna say to you is, I, I have seen in my own life what an education provides for individuals. I, I have seen, out of all the educators I could tell you I could, I have ever had, I just wanna say this. My mom passed away January the fifth, two thousand fourteen. The two greatest educators I ever had in my life were my mom and my dad. Nothing like having a wonderful father and daddy who teach you the principles of life and how to treat other people. So I want you to know I have a service mentality. I serve one who is the greatest of all in that respect. I want you to know that in every step of my direction here, and I'm so gracious for your vote of confidence, I really truly am, I am so gracious for that. I will do everything within my power to, to vote as my constituents with how they vote. My entire life, I have tried to be... My entire life, I have tried to be the person that my mom and dad would like for me to be, the husband my wife would like for me to be, the dad that my children would like for me to be, and in the same note, I would say, I've attempted to make everybody happy. I, I know what I'm getting into now, or at least I think I do, I think I do. And I know there will be times that I'm gonna be getting phone calls, because I did not vote on a certain topical issue, like a certain maybe friend or neighbor might think that I shouldn't have voted, but when you, you vote the way that you feel that your constituents behave when you vote, and the way the Lord has let you vote, I think that will be, I think I'll be able to put my head on pillow and say goodnight and sleep well. Again, thank you very much, I look forward to representing you, and I truly say I love you, Ms. Peddaway, if it makes any difference, Mr. Peddaway, if y'all cheer out of house now, if you hear what was discussed now, if you need to come stay with us. The upstairs, the baby, if you just come on, we'll make you home. We make you home. So, I, I, you know, I could, I don't have problem talking. Thank you, thank you very much, y'all, so very much. I, I do believe I understand the direction this has to go, the Edgecombe Commissioners, for my approval, sir. I, I, I hope their vote is, is the same as yours. That's all I say. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
If they, if they don't vote you in, then they won't get our votes in there.
Well, let me say, I think I realized now, Ralph, why they were so united. And Ms. Gladys, I'm just, I'm just surprised with you, because when we're adopting those rules, you took it from three minutes to two minutes, you could have taken this to about five, two seconds. Everybody, um, thank you.
It's easy for me this season. Everybody likes it.
Well, let me say this, in all seriousness, this is democracy that we're going through right now, and Ralph, you're right, it's a consultation process, that's the language he's using in statute, so that's why we sent it as a recommendation. We wish you nothing but the best, as this committee has done its work. Thank you for allowing me to step in, apologize for a couple of the hiccups, and Peddways, at least you have, one of you have an hour. But others gonna have to stay. That's gonna be interesting, Ralph, which one you get. But this concludes the work of the committee, God bless you all, it's their motion to adjourn.
Who made that motion?
It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, and I think we did this still, in spite of me, about an hour. So all in favor, let it be known by saying, see you later. All in tow, no, the highest having motion back here.